Okay, so we got everybody dialed in. We have one, well, call the meeting to order. What time is this? Nine forty-two, so we're starting a little late, apologies to the technical difficulties, we're not on our side today. So just as a housekeeping matter, since we're doing a bit of a hybrid meeting today, I won't be calling a roll like we did completely through the voting process, I'll just be asking for all in favor, all any opposed. So for those of you that are virtually here, you can, just as long as you understand that. With that, we'll start with adoption of the agenda. Anything from administration addition wise?
No additions from administration.
Anything from council? If there's nothing, I'll accept a
I'll move the agenda as presented.
Motion to accept as agenda, or as presented, sorry. All in favor?
In favor.
It's councillor Prestige, councillor McQueen, I see your hand up, councillor Rennie?
In favor?
Thank you. So that's carried. That brings us to adoption of the minutes, item three point one. Any errors or omissions in the minutes? Councillor Governlock?
I'll move the minutes of July twentieth, twenty twenty-one circulated.
Okay. Motion on the floor from councillor Governlock, any discussion on the motion? All in question, all in favor?
In favor.
Okay, councillor McQueen, I see you in favor, councillor Prestige, I heard in favor, councillor Rennie?
In favor.
Okay. That item's carried. And that brings us to public hearing doesn't start till ten. So we'll move over to five point one. Land use amendment for northeast six fifty-nine, twelve west of the fifth. Joan?
Good morning, council. We have an application for land use amendment on the northeast of six fifty-nine twelve over sixty-six, or sorry, sixty-four point three nine acre parcel. The gentleman's looking to change your country residential to rural recreational to have above five to ten off-grid cabins located throughout the property along with so they can feel just heightened access to the cabins themselves. It is indicated that all forest that's currently located on the property will remain intact for privacy purposes. So Woodlands County land use by law will be required to be amended from the CR District thirty-two to rural recreational district in order to allow for the use. The municipal development plan does identify the quarter section as future country residential district. However, given the contemplated use, I don't believe we need to amend the municipal development plan because if you remove those cabins, it could still be converted back to country residential and subdivision could occur in the future. It's not within the intermunicipal development plan area, so I don't need to worry about that. So I've just attached for council's consideration an amended bylaw of five seventy-four twenty-one, amending the land use bylaw from country residential to rural recreational district. As well as we need to establish a public hearing. So I'm just looking at a motion with respect to that as well. Contemplating September twenty-first at ten a.m. here at the White House office.
Okay, so procedurally, Joan, we're not approving or disapproving anything today. What we're looking for is to give first reading to the bylaw, then we can schedule the public hearing, then get the feedback and make the final decision on whether or not this is something council wants to do, just so that everybody understands the procedural end of it, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to administration, councillor Governlock?
I think it's also important to clarify that this is only a rezoning request and not a development permit. And the restrictions or the concerns with regards to how those cabins would be built and other matters related to management of that, that would be a municipal planning commission?
Under the rural recreational district, it would actually be a permitted use. Oh, so administration would issue the development permit for that.
That concerns me. You're saying that it would not have to go to the MPC to review the type of conditions that would apply to this operation?
That's correct. Administration would put those conditions to it. They would be no different than conditions that we would provide to the municipal planning commission for consideration.
Where in our land use bylaw do we have special regulations for rural recreation land use as opposed to any other development?
We've got a section with respect to campsites, we've got a section with respect to cabins being utilized on a temporary basis. Yeah. We don't have something specifically for rural recreational per se that's based on individual uses.
So what I'm confused on, Joan, is why, if somebody's going to build a cabin and call it a cabin because it's simply a matter of semantics, why they would be exempt from a development permit as opposed to anybody else on private land putting up a building?
They're not exempt from a development permit.
Okay.
They would still be required to make application for a development permit. It's just a matter of it's administration that would make the approval on it versus the municipal planning commission.
All right, but now how do we make that determination that administration is now going to oversee the regulations pertaining to that type of a development as opposed to the normal process that I'm familiar with where every development permit there unless it's pre-approved through the land use bylaw comes to MPC?
So in this instance, under country residential, the development of cabins is neither permitted nor discretionary. Under the rural recreational district, the cabin use would be considered a permitted use. So therefore, administration would approve that permit versus if it was a discretionary use under the rural recreational, then the municipal planning commission would review it.
Could you bring back or familiarize at least myself, I don't know if the rest of council is concerned about, how this type of a development would proceed, but I'd like to see the regulations that apply to this kind of a process. It strikes me that this is not a common application we see and I certainly don't want to be remiss in terms of making sure that the concerns, the common concerns we see with regards to land development in the area are looked after.
So if I can clarify what you're looking for at the public hearing would be essentially recommended conditions that administration would consider?
Those conditions would be very important and I think the public has a right to know and certainly council has a right to know.
Yeah, certainly we could do that.
Just a question for Joan. If we have a permitted use, if it's a permitted use and there's an application made through a permitted use, is the MPC or are we capable of denying it?
If it's a permitted use?
Right.
No. You don't have to have some pretty stringent reasons as to why you were refusing it.
Okay.
But yeah, legally, when it's a permitted use, it would be difficult to refuse it.
Okay. Councillor Klein?
Just a very simple question, read the diagram or plot plan. There's that one narrow strip there, so was there a service road through there or what is the dedication for that?
That was left for future development of the country residential. So it's thirty meters wide, a road could be put through that area.
So just that's the length of it or just go all the way through the quarter?
Just to the top of that parcel.
Good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions to administration on this? Anything from councillor McQueen, councillor Prestige, or councillor Rennie?
I have no questions.
Go ahead, councillor Rennie.
Sorry, I said I have no questions.
Oh, no questions, okay, thank you councillor Rennie.
No questions from me.
Councillor Klein?
Make a motion to council, give first reading to bylaw five seventy-four slash twenty-one to many land use bylaw four nine zero one seven for part of the northeast six fifty-nine, twelve west of the fifth containing sixty-four point three nine acres from country residential to rural recreation district.
Thank you councillor Klein, motion on the floor from councillor Klein, any discussion on that motion? And for those of you that think I'm waiting a long time, I know there's a bit of a lag for the internet here, so I'm just trying to give everybody a whole opportunity to respond. I didn't hear anything, so with that, I'll call the question, all in favor? I see four in favor here, councillor McQueen, I see a hand up.
In favor.
Councillor Prestige was in favor, councillor Rennie?
In favor.
Councillor Rennie's in favor, that's carried. We have, yes, go ahead.
Motion to council direct administration to schedule a public hearing for land use amendment application, twenty twenty-one UAO one, bylaw five seventy-four twenty-one for September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one at ten o'clock a.m. at the Woodlands County White Court Municipal Office downstairs, council chambers.
Thank you. Any motion on the floor from councillor Kush, any questions on that motion? Now I'll call the question, all in favor?
In favor.
Councillor Prestige, councillor McQueen
In favor.
hand up, and councillor Rennie, thank you very much, that's carried. And we are four minutes away here. We'll go on to this letter for the Airshow Society Community Initiatives quickly ahead of this ten a.m. public hearing. Moving. Is Bert here to present this?
No, he isn't, I'll be presenting.
You'll be presenting?
We're worship members of council, we're just looking for an email that came in this morning regarding this matter.
If you look for it for three and a half more minutes, we'll just do the public hearing. Probably want to sit in the gallery there.
Okay.
Any luck there, Mr. Bishan?
Nope, but we'll proceed.
Okay.
Worship members of council, administration received a letter from the White Court Airshow Society requesting a letter of support for a grant application. Over the last ten years, there's been a number of airshows at the local airport. The Airshow Society is, or I should say was, planning on having a airshow in twenty twenty, however, it was canceled due to COVID. They recently reached out to us that they are planning for twenty twenty-two. However, as of yesterday, due to some economic issues in the economy in general in the area, they may be pushing that airshow back to twenty twenty-three. However, we did not receive confirmation, which we were expecting this morning. However, having said that, the Airshow Society is intending to apply to the community initiatives program, which is provincial grant. They've asked for a letter of support from Woodlands County and the recommendation is that council approves providing a letter of support to the White Court Airshow Society for the twenty twenty-two Hometown Heroes Airshow for their community initiative program application. If we do get confirmation that they are moving the airshow to twenty twenty-three and do not require the letter, then we will just not proceed on providing it.
Well, yeah, and the motion, as long as it's for the twenty twenty-two airshow, not twenty twenty-three, we'll go. Is that the acceptable? Any questions from administration on this? Councillor McQueen, I see your hand is up.
No, I was just going to make a motion that council approves providing a support letter to the White Court Airshow Society, the twenty twenty-two Hometown Heroes Airshow for their community initiatives program application.
Very good, thank you councillor McQueen. Any discussion on the motion? Pretty straightforward, okay, I'll go ahead and call the question, and all in favor? Four here, councillor
Rennie, in favor?
Okay, I heard a stereo councillor Rennie and councillor Prestige, and councillor McQueen, you have your hand up, so we'll go with carried. With that, it is ten, oh gosh, look at that, still got two minutes. I'll just talk really slow. We have a ten o'clock public hearing on the bylaw five seventy-one twenty-one and request to close three road allowances at the White Court Airport. So we've got a few people here in the gallery, I'm assuming that that might be part of the public hearing, so we'll find out here right away. We've also got a little different public hearing bylaws, we split out of the out of the meeting procedures bylaw, so it's a little more robust, council can ask some questions. And there's certainly an opportunity to gather a little more information before we approve or disapprove the bylaw. So with that, it is ten o'clock. So I will declare the public hearing for bylaw five seventy-one twenty-one road closure open and turn it over to our infrastructure director to put the background.
Worship members of council, at the July sixth, twenty twenty-one council meeting, the first reading was read to establish a public hearing for bylaw five seventy-one twenty-one to close three road allowances at the White Court Airport. Once closed, the intent of administration is to identify these areas as aprons. They have been classified as roads for a number of years, which allows for public access. So this is basically just cleaning up an issue at the airport.
Okay. Any questions from council related to the bylaw, councillor Klein?
What's the change from going from from where they are now to what they want to do? Less access for the public or? If they are roads, then they're deemed to be for public access and they are on the airside of the airport, so we do not want public access. You under it?
Any other questions, anyone from the virtual end, questions from council? Nothing. Okay, this is an opportunity for any written or verbal submissions. Did we have any written submissions?
We received some written submissions, but no objections to the closures.
So they were in support?
They just identified they had no objections.
Okay. Are there any verbal, anyone in the gallery that actually wishes to speak on this? Because this is the opportunity to ask some questions and figure out what we're doing here, so. Yes, go ahead.
Just, is it a mapping that I received in the mail?
I'm sorry, and just for the purposes of the hearing, you've got to, I'm going to make sure, I think you have to state your name and
Alan Berus.
Yeah.
I'm a leaseholder at the White Court Airport.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Just a question, I received a map in the mail and it's maybe just a clerical thing, but there's three former roads shown. One in the middle seems to end abruptly, then the other two on the other side, is that just a mapping issue?
Through the chair, that is the actual layout of those road allowances.
So just for clarification, the one in the middle that you're talking about, and I'm going to hold up a sheet of paper here, so that's the one you're talking about?
Yeah, it's, I'm assuming that beyond that, I guess to the northeast of all of these areas indicated as road must be apron. I would think, like tying them together? Up in this area here, because this one just ends
Yes.
in, in reality, would all these areas also be shaded yellow?
No. The areas basically to the north are apron three, so they'll be tying into apron three.
Oh, so they will all be considered, they all apron, timed. And one other question is how, how did that, like the newest section of to be determined to be apron again, where the lots are on the on the northwest corner of this map, the newest construction, constructed here, apron, how would that ever be deemed by accident to road? Just kind of curious, I mean, that's the, it's obviously built as a taxiway and substantially wide and accessed hangers. How would that have been?
Through the chair, the area you're talking about is classified as an apron and not a road. That area is not identified on this map.
Yeah, the one that I've got actually is one of the three that are being changed from road to apron.
Oh, I see the, the third one on the left you're referring to?
Yeah, I mean, that was constructed the most recently as an apron for aircraft access. It's just a curiosity question, how that would ever have started to be put on airport maps as a road?
Through the chair, how and why, we don't know. Just a possibly clerical error, we don't know.
If I may, I can probably answer that.
Go ahead, Joan.
At time of subdivision, when they put it through to land titles, land titles doesn't recognize an apron per se. We didn't realize that until after the fact that they do recognize apron. So it is, it was done as road on the plan, actual plan that was done at land titles. Subsequently, what we had found out after the fact was that we would have to do it as either municipal reserve or some other means to prevent that. And that's how we, when they were visually registered, they were registered as, but the intent was for a purpose.
So this is basically a trip up of who defines what something is and how it's defined and that kind of thing. And the intent of this is to bring the road allowances back under the airport as an apron by closing them as a public access road, is that? Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Anything else?
The designation of, this is just a curiosity more than anything. An apron as opposed to a taxiway, obviously a taxiway is for aircraft to get from point A to point B. Does apron apply or imply parking or so aircraft or aircraft movement?
Through the chair, we've identified that that will be classified as aprons. Yes, there's possibility of somebody parking on these sites, however, what they get designated as may change, our airport consultant is reviewing that right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other, any other questions? Anything from council? I don't hear anything. Okay, if there's nothing further, I'll declare the public hearing closed, well, councillor Governlock?
With regards to the issue that Joan identifies, given the fact that under subdivision regulations, this had to be classified as a road to qualify for, I guess, registration. So that particular issue suggests to me that further development may fall under the same kind of expectations and I wonder if in fact we don't need to approach the problems with identifying this as an issue there so that there is a long-term solution in place to accommodate further development without having to, I guess, gameplay and properly manage that airport. So I'd like the administration to look into the issue a little further and come back with some kind of a recommendation for long-term development on that airport.
Okay, anything further relating to the bylaw closure of the roads? If there's nothing further, then I will declare the public hearing closed. And we are moving on. Fire Smart, F R I A A grant application.
Worship members of council, Woodlands County has conducted or prepared the Fire Smart applications in previous years, which include specific areas that require vegetation management. No applications have been filed since two thousand thirteen. Administration is filing for a sixty thousand dollar grant for the twenty twenty-two fiscal year. This will be stage one, which will result in a consultant being hired to prepare the mitigation plan. Although the maximum funding is two hundred thousand, we have to identify what the funds are used for and until we have a plan in place, it's difficult to identify what would use the extra money for. So we are applying for sixty thousand dollars, which will form the mitigation plan. In twenty twenty-two, we will apply for further funds for twenty twenty-three and start implementing the plan that the consultants come up with. Recommendation is that council directs administration to apply for the Fire Smart F R I A A grant application for the sum of sixty thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Andre, any questions to administration on this one? Councillor Governlock?
Does the conditions of the grant application require any funding support from the municipality directly itself?
Not directly, but the county's contribution will be in kind, so staff hours.
Okay, so it potentially has budget implications, Andre, would be the bottom line?
To some extent, yes. But that would be minor dollars and it will be, it'll form part of the twenty twenty-two budget.
And I have no problem proceeding with a grant application, but I'm a little bit in the dark as to what the intent is for the money. Like where are we going to allocate that money, what particular type of initiatives are we planning? I'm not familiar with a plan.
So through the chair to councillor Governlock, the sixty thousand dollars will be used to hire a consultant. The consultant will review the county's terrain, the residents, the type of you know, is it forest in the areas, which areas are heavily forested? And then prioritize which areas will uh, and then prioritize which areas will be, uh, identified for the Fire Smart program in the future years. So this is just to put the plan together by a consultant.
Counselor Klein, sorry.
He was first.
I was gonna make a motion.
Go ahead, Counselor Klein.
Yeah, no, it, it's one of those things, uh, one only has to watch TV and see what's going on in B C right now, uh, and it's not rocket science. If we don't do something and get prepared for something that may happen here, I remember years ago, uh, when I was sat on M P C, I kept saying, you know, when we build these big subdivisions, we need in, in access and egress, and some of them don't have that. Uh, frustrated the hell out of me, cause I knew this was gonna come back someday. Uh, once we get it set up, then we can go and, and figure out what we need for equipment or what we need to do to make some changes, I think. So I, 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 I'm totally in support of this, something we should have done years ago.
I was just basically saying the same thing Counsel Klein said, it's, uh, this is a good, good way to at least start and, you know, figure out a plan and kinda go from there, uh, so would I make a motion to council directs administration, or administration to apply for the Fire Smart, F R I A A grant application for the sum of sixty thousand dollars?
Okay. Motion on the floor from Counselor Kush, any discussion on the motion? Anything from the virtual? I hear nothing, with that, I'll call the question, all in favor? Counselor McQueen, I see in favor. Counselor.
In favor.
Thank you, Counsel Prestige.
In favor.
Counsel Rennie, so that item's carried. So that brings us over to, where's my page two? Oh, Horn Road subdivision, so item eight point three, Horn Road subdivision drainage tender award, that's gonna be Andre.
Your worship members of council, the twenty twenty-one capital budget included funds for the drainage improvements within the Horn Road area. Provincial funding grant was obtained for this and additional, an additional project in the same area. W S P engineering was contracted to prepare the drainage plan tender, tender award. Uh, W S P's engineering quote for the project is fifty-four thousand three hundred eleven dollars. Tender was let out, it was advertised in all the, uh, regular means, we had two bidders. Uh, low bid was Westcor Contracting Inc. for one hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars plus taxes. The provincial grant funding is for five hundred sixty-five thousand, and this will, uh, improve the drainage within the six quarters, which in turn will, uh, greatly improve the road structures in those areas, which has been an ongoing issue. Recommendation is that council awards a Horn Road drainage project to Westcor Contracting Limited for the tendered amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars plus taxes, and that Woodlands County Council approves a ten percent contingency for the Horn Road drainage project in the amount of twenty thousand dollars if required, and that Woodlands County Council approves fifty-four thousand three hundred eleven dollars in engineering fees for W S P engineering.
Okay. Thank you, Andre, any questions to administration on this, Counselor Klein?
Andre, in this project, uh, view at, uh, with the contractor, had a plan on where all the waste material's gonna go?
On this, uh, proj- or through the chair to Counsel Klein, on this project, there's not a lot of waste material.
Okay.
Uh, we have identified that any waste material will go to the airport property through the back gate.
Any other questions? I, I have one question, so just, I'm just a little fuzzy on, uh, the financing for this, so you said there's a, there's a grant as well? So how much of this is actually coming out of Woodlands County coffers?
This is all funded from the provincial grant.
It's all from the grant?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. Any other, any questions from the, uh, virtual world?
Um, Mayor Burrows?
Go ahead, Counsel Prestige.
Uh, what happens to the remaining money in the grant?
Uh, through the chair to Counsel Prestige, this is phase one, uh, the next phase is, uh, actual road improvements, which will be, uh, coming out shortly, all these funds, one of the requirements of the grant is that all the funds get spent in two thousand twenty-one, so there is, uh, the next phase yet to come.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, I'm Counselor, uh, Governor Lock.
Okay, I'm prepared to move the council award the Horn Ray, Horn Road Drainage Project to Westcor Contracting for the tendered amount of a hundred ninety-nine thousand eighty-eighty-five plus taxes.
Okay, motion on the floor from Counsel Governor Lock, any discussion on that motion?
That's all one motion, the rest of it's in the same motion, is it not?
It's gonna be three separate motions.
Just making sure.
Yeah, for, for clarity, it'll be three separate motions.
Thank you.
Uh, any discussion on the motion? Hearing nothing, I'll go ahead and call a question, all in favor? Counselor McQueen?
In favor.
Counselor Prestige, Counsel Rennie?
In favor.
Okay, that item's carried. Uh, Counselor Kush?
We got a motion Woodlands County Council approve a ten percent contingency for the Horn Road Drainage Project in the amount of twenty thousand dollars if required.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Kush, motion on the floor from Counsel Kush, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor? Four here, Counsel McQueen?
In favor.
Counsel Prestige? Counsel Rennie?
In favor.
And that's carried. Third one, go, go, Counsel Klein?
Make a motion to Woodlands County approves fifty-four thousand three hundred eleven dollars in engineering fees to W S P engineering.
Thank you, Counsel Klein, motion on the floor from Counsel Klein, any discussion on that motion? I see, Counsel Governor Lock?
The, the engineering, uh, cost for the municipality have been a concern for a number of years and, and, uh, putting forward this motion is kinda open-ended for me. I wonder if we couldn't put some conditions on, uh, the approval of, uh, the engineering fees, in other words, after the project is complete, uh, there, and maybe a holdback, uh, of, of a certain amount to ensure that the expectations of the, the project meet, uh, the county's expectations. Uh, would, uh, would Counsel Klein be, uh, receptive to tailoring that motion a little bit?
Well, I would, but I'm, I'm looking to administration to see if we can actually do that, or, yeah, or, or, or if in, in their, in their process, there's a guarantee that what they say is gonna work, will work.
Let's give administration a, a chance for feedback on that.
Through the chair to council, if there is a desire for council to put a condition like that, uh, we would have to identify that ahead of hiring, uh, engineers, so that they are aware. Uh, this is a simple drainage program, uh, water runs downhill, I don't see there being a big issue, uh, as far as this project goes, but moving forward, we can make, put that in, uh, a condition ahead of time.
Counsel Governor Lock?
So, Andre, with respect to this payment, uh, when would the, the, the payment of engineering fees, uh, proceed? Because this is an open-ended motion, it doesn't say when that payment would be made. Can, can we, uh, make sure that this is at the end of the project as opposed to prior to the project? What's your expectations in that regard?
Through the chair to Council Governor Lock, as with all, all projects and all consultants, uh, invoicing is on a monthly basis, so at the end of the month, we are invoiced, uh, and then we typically have thirty days to pay once we receive the invoice. So this will not be paid all at once, it, it's monthly.
Okay, I can live with that.
Okay, so still a motion on the floor from Counselor Klein, there was no amendment to that motion, um, any other questions? I hear none, so I'll call the question, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Okay, and I see Counsel McQueen has a hand up, so that's carried. Uh, that brings us to. Counsel Governor Lock?
Before we leave this subject matter of this, uh, particular, uh, engineering project, the concern that I, I raised with regards to engineering, uh, services the county has experienced in the past and the comments that, uh, Director of Infrastructure Andre Bouchon made with regards to, uh, a holdback on these engineering, uh, invoices, uh, I'd, I'd like to request that prior to any further, uh, applications for engineering work, that we factor in a holdback, uh, as part of the engineering services contract.
Uh, Mr. Bouchon?
Uh, through the chair to council, uh, typically holdbacks on construction projects are forty-five days upon completion. If that's council's wish, we can implement that on, uh, R F Ps moving forward for engineering services.
Is that going to increase our costs on these?
It's possible. It all, it all depends on the magnitude of the project, uh, the type of project. But typically, the, the projects that, uh, the county's been doing recently, I don't see it having a big impact.
Counsel Kush?
Ask the administration, would it, uh, impact the amount of engineers we might have available?
Through the chair to Counsel Kush, I, I don't believe so, uh, they would take that into consideration when they put their proposals together and, and if they have to make up that holdback, uh, they would just include it in their price.
Any questions from virtual? Okay. Would you like to make a, uh, go ahead, uh, Mr. Bouchon?
Uh, sorry, through the chair to council, uh, typically, uh, holdbacks are ten percent on the monthly, uh, billing, so if that's council's desire, then we would do the, whatever the typical contract holdbacks are, which is normally ten percent, same thing for the engineers and forty-five day holdback.
Yeah, my, my problem is I don't wanna really do this on the fly right now, I, I'd love to, I'd love to have administration put this together as a recommendation for the next meeting, and, and then we can have a little more.
Discussion.
Discussion about it, but right now, it's, it's a little, it's a little, uh, quick, go ahead.
Through the chair to, uh, council, perhaps, uh, if, uh, council directs administration to prepare a policy to bring back to council on this item for discussion.
Counsel Governor Lock?
So on that note, uh, I would, uh, put a motion on the floor that, uh, council, uh, direct administration, uh, uh, to review the tender process to, uh, include a, uh, a ten percent or uh, some form of a holdback on both engineering and contract services and bring that back to, uh, council for the next, uh, or the earliest opportunity.
Okay, motion on the floor from Counsel Governor Lock, any discussion further, well, any discussion on the motion? I think we kinda put the discussion ahead of the motion, but that's good, um, anything from virtual? Okay, I hear nothing, I'll call the question, all in favor?
In favor.
Counsel.
In favor.
Counsel Prestige and Counsel Rennie I heard in favor, and Counsel McQueen I see a hand up, so with that, that motion's passed, so we'll look forward to that report from administration. Uh, item eight point five, appointment of designated officer, development officer.
Eight point four has been looked after.
Oh, yeah, that's, I had it stroked because I was on to that, eight point four, minutes correction.
Your worship members of council, uh, over the recent, uh, number of years, administration's been utilizing it, the i-Campus, uh, minute and, uh, agenda system, which automatically prepares some of the minutes. Uh, recent review, uh, administration identified that there were three motions that showed that, uh, the items were passed when they should be identified as unanimously carried. Each of the motions in question deals with proceedings to the third reading of the bylaw in the motions. So the three motions should identify that they were unanimously passed, and the recommendation that council amends motions C fifteen, one ninety-four dash twenty twenty-one, C dash fifteen dash one ninety-eight dash twenty twenty-one, and C fif- dash fifteen dash two sixty-eight dash twenty twenty-one, to reflect that all three motions were unanimous, unanimously carried.
Okay. Counsel Governor Lock?
So the problem I have with this particular motion is how do we go back and validate that the motions were unanimously, uh, carried at that particular time? The minutes reflect that the motions were carried, and there should be no record as to the vote, other than the fact that it was carried. Uh, are, are we playing with something that, uh, we don't have the facts on?
Yes, I will defer to Shannon on that question.
Go ahead, Shannon.
Mayor and council, um, I reviewed my notes, cause I did still have those, and that was unanimously made motions. Um, or I also would have pointed that out during the meeting itself and indicated that you couldn't have proceeded without it being unanimous of council.
And to the record as well, Shannon and I have gone forth on, back and forth on this a couple times, and the, uh, actually during the meeting, but, cause we've had a few, uh, in there that, um, first reading or second reading can be carried, but the motion to go to, to proceed to third reading has to be unanimous if you're gonna carry the entire bylaw in one day. And I know I've been very careful on making sure that that is a unanimous, uh, procedure, so, and, and she and I actually went back on this, because I was under the impression you had to have all the readings unanimous, it's just, uh, it's just the proceed to third and final reading that has to be unanimous, so.
That's correct, and if you look at the R F D itself, I did make mention of, like, we have to follow the M G A, and the M G A is very clear at section one eighty-four, or one eighty-seven, for that, uh, it has to be unanimous of council, so every member here had to vote in favor in order to proceed to that third reading. Now at the third reading, you are able to go, somebody at that point could say they don't agree, and it doesn't matter at that point, it still could possibly be carried, but you need that unanimous vote before it can proceed to that third reading.
Counsel Governor Lock?
So this in effect is simply a correction of the, uh, the minute summary, uh, there, the facts are that the motions to proceed had to have unanimous consent at the time, it's just a matter of how that was documented in the minutes. And on that note, I'll move that, uh, the minutes be corrected, uh, the council amends, say, the minutes of the motions for C fifteen, uh, one ninety-four twenty twenty-one, C fifteen, one ninety-eight twenty twenty-one, and C fifteen, uh, two sixty-eight twenty twenty-one, to reflect that all three, uh, motions were unanimous of carried.
Okay. Motion on the floor for Counsel Governor Lock, any discussion on the motion? I don't hear any, I don't see any hands up, so I'll call the question, all in favor?
In favor.
Counsel Governor Lock?
In favor.
Okay, so that's carried. Uh, that brings us on to item. Uh, that brings us on to item eight point five, Appointment of Designated Officer. Joe? Oh, he's here too.
I'd like to introduce Peter McKay, who's our new development officer. So on August eleventh, we filled the vacant position, um, Jennifer Soderman left us and went to Bend, New Greenview to pursue her management career. Uh, so we retained Peter McKay, who comes to us from, uh, St. Paul County. Section, uh, six twenty-four of the Municipal Government Act does require that Counsel must by bylaw provide for, uh, development authority to exercise development powers. Um, of course, in our land use bylaw, uh, section twelve, uh, does indicate that we need a motion from Counsel, uh, to appoint, uh, Mr. McKay as a designated officer, development officer. So I'm just looking for a motion from Counsel.
Counselor Klein? When I saw that, I figured, well, he's moving up from Nova Scotia to be here and didn't want to be in the federal government anymore, but, uh, I'll make a motion that Counsel appoints Peter McKay as a designated officer, development officer for Woodlands County in accordance with section twelve. Woodlands County land use bylaw number four ninety seventeen with amendments.
He looks better than the actual candidate.
Let's hope he's smarter. So, uh, any discussion on the motion? I don't hear any, with that, I'll call the question all in favor.
In favor.
Okay, Counsel McQueen, Counsel.
In favor.
And Counsel Rennie, so that's carried.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, welcome aboard.
Thanks.
All right, item eight point six, meeting dates.
Your worship members of Counsel, at the twenty twenty organizer, organizational meeting, Counsel made a motion that, uh, Counsel holds their regular scheduled meetings on the first and third Tuesday of each month commencing at nine thirty to be held in the White Court Municipal Office electronically until the COVID nineteen situation has ended. Recently, the province, uh, identified that they were, uh, extending the COVID protocols until the end of September, which means that there are roughly, uh, three, or only three Counsel meetings remaining until the twenty twenty-one municipal election. Administration is recommending that meetings continue to be held at nine thirty A.M. in the municipal office in White Court and that the newly elected officials can decide on the future of schedule for twenty twenty-one organizational meeting. Recommendation that Counsel continue to hold their regular Counsel meetings on the first and third Tuesday of every month at nine thirty at the count, Woodlands County Municipal Offices in White Court until after the twenty twenty-one municipal election and the twenty twenty-one organizational meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to Administration on this one? Anything from virtual?
No.
No. Okay, go ahead, Counsel Kush.
I'll make a motion that Counsel continue holding their regular Counsel meetings on the first and third Tuesday of every month at nine thirty A.M. at the Woodlands County Municipal Office in White Court until after the twenty twenty-one music, or municipal election and the twenty twenty-one organizational meeting.
Motion on the floor from Counsel Kush, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question all in favor.
In favor.
In favor.
And Counsel Rennie had voted, so that's carried. Uh, item eight point seven, Barhead Victim Services.
Your worship members of Counsel, the Barhead Community Victim Services provides annual reports to Counsel regarding the programming provided by the White Court, sorry, by the Barhead Victim Services Unit. Woodlands County believes in the services that Barhead Community Victim Services provides to the citizens of Woodlands County and area. Recommendation that Counsel accepts the Barhead Community Victim Services annual report as information and confirms Woodlands County annual support of one thousand dollars.
Okay. Any, uh, questions to Administration on this one? Is this an increase, a decrease, or the same?
I believe that is the standard contribution that Counsel's been giving.
Okay. And anything from virtual? Nothing, go ahead, Counsel Klein.
It's one of those really frustrating ones with what the province is or isn't doing with victim services. Everybody's up in the air trying to figure out where they're going forward and, you know, you gotta give these guys a lot of credit for what they do for us. So I'll, I'll make a motion to Counsel accept the communities, Barhead Community Victim Services annual report for information and confirms Woodlands County's annual support of a thousand dollars.
Okay, motion on the floor from, uh, Counsel Klein, any discussion on the motion? See any, all in favor?
In favor.
Counsel Prestige.
In favor.
And Counsel Rennie, that's carried. That brings us to item eight point eight, the Anthony Gordon Memorial Golf Classic, classic.
Your worship members of Counsel, the twenty twenty-one Anthony Gordon Memorial Golf Classic is taking place on Monday, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, at the White Court Golf Country Club. In order to support the event, and Eagle Tower Victim Services has requested Counsel consider registering a team for the event. Cost is five hundred dollars for a team of four, or a hundred and twenty-five dollars per person. I should identify that there are only two spots that were available when Administration, Administration reached out to the tournament. And the recommendation is that Counsel authorize Administration to register a two-person team for the twenty twenty-one Anthony Gordon Memorial Golf Classic. If Counsel does not have two members that wish to participate, Administration can identify two administrative persons to, uh, enter into the golf tournament.
Okay, and this is a fundraiser for the, uh?
For the Eagle River Group, yes.
Yeah. Any questions from, uh, Counsel McQueen, Prestige, or Rennie?
Uh, I'll make a recommendation that Counsel authorize Administration to register a team for the twenty twenty-one Anthony Gordon Memorial Golf Classic.
Okay, motion on the floor from Counsel Prestige, any discussion on that motion? Okay, uh, with that, I'll call the question all in favor.
In favor.
Counsel McQueen.
In favor.
And Counsel Rennie, so that's carried. All right, Counsel Klein?
You know, probably gonna say the same thing, whoever's gonna do this needs to be, like, Administration know ASAP.
I was just going to ask if there are any Counsel members that wish to participate. If not, we'll identify some administrative staff.
I'm on to the regimental ball already here, what's the date of this one?
Twenty-third.
I can't do it. Any, any, anyone else on coun, on Counsel? Okay, looks like it's two members of your admin. Everybody? Okay. Uh, item eight point nine, White Court RCMP Regimental Ball.
The twenty twenty-one RCMP Regimental Ball is scheduled to take place on Saturday, October second, twenty twenty-one. This event is held every two years. Historically, Woodlands County Council has attended the event. Recommendation is that Counsel direct Administration to obtain tickets for Counselors to attend the twenty twenty-one RCMP Regimental Ball. And if the motion does pass, if we could get a list of Counsel members that wish to attend, uh, sooner than later would be better.
Okay. This is how many Counselors to go and then who? Anyone wish to make a motion on this one? Counsel Govanlock?
Certainly, it's my perspective that the RCMP, uh, have provided this municipality in this region, uh, with first-class, uh, services, uh, there. And I've heard from other municipalities throughout the province there that they support the RCMP and want to continue the relationship that has existed in the past, uh, there. And, uh, to that extent, I believe it's important that the relationship between, uh, the RCMP and, uh, the communities that they rep, uh, that they, uh, I guess, uh, enforce the law in is as positive as possible, and this is an opportunity to enhance that relationship. And in that regard, I, uh, I support, uh, that, uh, members of Counsel should, uh, participate in the regiment, regimental ball that's being proposed. And so I'd move that Counsel direct Administration to obtain tickets for Counselors , uh, to attend the twenty twenty-one RCMP Regimental Ball.
Okay. Uh, just a point of clarification on the motion, so only Counselors and, or Counselors and spouses, or?
Counselors and spouses.
Okay. Motion on the floor from Counsel Govanlock? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question all in favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Item's carried. Okay, that brings us on to, of course, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Through the Chair to Counsel, if, uh, Counsel, uh, Counsel members could let Shannon know if they are planning on attending, uh, by the end of August, it would be appreciated.
Okay, did everyone, virtual, get that one?
Yes.
Okay.
We will, we will be booking the tickets, be, like, the first day of September, so.
Okay. Thank you, Andre. So that brings us to correspondence and information items. Anything in the correspondence and information items? If not, I'll accept the motion.
I had a.
Go ahead, go ahead, Counsel.
Jim. I had a resident that was wondering why those parts aren't available on the agenda so that members of the public could see them. Just consideration for the future, could we put those into our agenda packages as well?
I thought they were in the agenda package, they're hyperlink, aren't they?
Not the letters themselves?
Yes.
Not the letters themselves.
Okay, is there any FWOIP issues with that?
Uh, for the most part, there shouldn't be, but I would have to look at each letter individually.
Okay. All right, uh, anything else on the correspondence and information items? Would you like to make a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept for information.
Okay, motion on the floor from Counsel Klein to accept his information, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
In favor.
Counsel McQueen.
In favor.
Counsel Rennie and Counsel Prestige, so that's carried. Uh, that brings us to reports from members of Counsel. Let's start over here, Counsel Klein.
Yeah, it's been pretty slow the last little while. Um, the thing I do have to report on last Tuesday, uh, as you know, I sit on the Provincial Agricultural Service Board Committee and, uh, we had a meeting with Minister Nixon, uh, over your, uh, different resolutions, however, and, and, and open discussion on what's going on in the province. As you know, he, uh, was with the Premier and our, our Ag Minister on Fri, uh, previous Friday to announce a, uh, a plan going forward to get some money out to some ag producers, uh, basically the cow calf guys. And, uh, it was really strange, the day they made the announcement, I got my, my paperwork back from the, from AFSC that basically says for July and for May and June, we had ninety-nine percent of normal rainfall and I wasn't getting anything. Uh, and I made that comment, uh, we had a meeting previous to meeting with the Minister and I made that comment and I was suggested that I make, uh, make him aware of that and, and, uh, bring him up to speed, so that was the first thing I did and, and, uh, his comment back was, yeah, we, we know there's a, a problem. Um, Mister, Mister Dreschen is determined, there's, there's, uh, they need to make some changes with the moisture deficiency program and they formed a committee to look at that, so hopefully going forward, we'll change. Uh, as I said, in, in, in May and June, we had ninety-nine percent of normal rainfall, so you get absolutely nothing. July and August, uh, so far, we're at over seventy percent of normal rainfall. We had forty-five days of no rain at all and temperatures in the thirties, but because we had rain at either end of that, you get no insurance. So they came forward with the, with the plan, they're giving, the plan says they're giving two hundred dollars per bred cow. Um, the ninety-four dollars will be coming from the province right away. The other, the, as far as mine is, they're gonna wait for, for Mister Trudeau to come forward. Now they've declared an election, I'm not sure when that's gonna come forward or maybe have to wait till after the election, I'm, I'm not sure on that. The interesting comments I heard from that was that was, that section of the program will be a receipt-based eligibility. I'm not sure what receipt-based was, whether you have to turn in receipts for feed or show them that you've basically taken some other crop off, offline, I'm not sure. Uh, we haven't seen anything in writing or, 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 or the plan so far. When I talked with the AFSC and Barhead last week, they said they're still in the process of, of defining the program, so. Program's out there, we just have to wait and see that, the other comments. Uh, one of the other, uh, things that, uh, Mister Nixon had brought forward was, uh, crazy leases that are not being used, that, uh, if somebody has some land that's not being used, if they could call the three-ten farm number and, uh, they would then determine or find people that could use that land. There's a lot, there's, there's crazy leases out there right now that don't have an animal on them. So if there's anybody that has land that's, uh, under agricultural disposition, I would encourage them to phone three-ten farm. I was, uh, in contact with the press in Barhead yesterday, they, they had some comments, some different things. I made sure I made them or that, so hopefully they get that into the paper for, for next week. And we can find some grass for people that are already dumping cows. Uh, modern livestock last week had over thirty-five hundred head, which is abnormal for this time of the year. Uh, everybody's dumping cows, there's nothing left, so. It's one of those discussions, I know, I, I had a discussion with Counsel McQueen this morning and, and, uh, we will be discussing that, uh, on our next Ag Service Board Committee meeting, whether or not we declare or are asked to be declared a disaster. Everybody around us is, it's, it's something we'll have to discuss and see if we intend on doing that. That's all I had.
Okay, any questions to Counsel Klein? All right, I'm going, uh, Counsel Kush?
Uh, again, been a little slow here the last little bit, most of the boards have been off for the summer. Uh, did have the, uh, pleasure here this past weekend though to visit a couple of the farms, we were, for open farm days we had in the area. Uh, went out to the Backwoods Buffalo Ranch, there we got the ribbon cutting, it was a really good time there. Just up the road, didn't realize, but we have a you-pick cherry, uh, farm. Uh, kinda neat thing there, but there are a bunch of rows of trees and bushes and you just kinda pay for a bucket and go fill it up, so. Kids enjoyed it, it was a good time. Uh, if anybody else gets a chance to make it out to any of the, uh, farm days, you know, next year when they do it, it's, uh, definitely good to showcase what, uh, what we have in the area.
Okay, any questions to Counsel Kush? Well, let's mix it up a little bit, we'll go with, uh, Counsel Prestige.
Yes, uh, I just like to give a thanks to our administration, we had our water. Yes, I'd just like to give a thanks to our administration, we had our water in Blue Ridge shot off over a weekend, and it was nice to see they had prompt response on it, got everything working, and supplied the residents with bottled water, and very well done, thank you. Other than that, it's been pretty slow.
Okay, thanks councillor Prestige, any questions or councillor Prestige? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, two things to mention, first off, a thanks to Bert Roach for putting together the opportunity for one of our Woodlands residents, Tiana Schmidt, who is Miss Teen Alberta, going to the Miss Teen Canada contest, so she was able to attend one of the farm days, and a chance to, to meet and speak with our residents, so that was a, a good opportunity, I appreciate him putting that together. Also, on a personal note, I had a chance to go to New York two weeks ago for a a Taekwondo project that I'm working on with the province, and I gotta urge anybody that's considering traveling outside of Canada, or even outside of Alberta, it is a gong show as to how unprepared the airports are right now, so to anybody, even though I have all my immunizations, and I had all my documentation, I had five different flights there and back. All five of them were either canceled or delayed, and it, it was just a horrible thing, so my message is, this is a great time to travel around Alberta through your holidays.
Okay, thanks councillor Rennie, any questions to councillor Rennie? No, councillor Governor Lock?
I have actually a, a number of questions that I'd like some, some response to, possibly, and I want to begin with the CAO contract. There, at the last council meeting, I asked whether meetings had taken place regarding the discussions of that CAO contract, and I was advised that one meeting had taken place. So another month has come and gone, I'm gonna direct my question to councillor Burrows, who's I guess been one of the individuals identified to proceed with those discussions. Can you give us an update as to what the status of the CAO contract discussions are?
Did you have something?
Through the Chair to Council, given this is a staffing issue, it would be better that this be discussed in closed session.
I, I have to disagree, Andre, I, I asked what's the status of the, the CAO contract discussions. I didn't ask for whether the contract had certain conditions imposed in it. I simply want to know whether a contract or an agreement has been reached, and whether this is coming back to council for review or not.
Well, yes, council will see it, yeah.
Yes, council will do what?
Will see it.
When?
Well, why don't we, again, let the CEO actually attend the meeting, and then we can move into a closed session, we'll put it on the agenda and get hooked up.
I, I have to say, councillor Burrows, that I'm, I'm not happy with the secrecy that is being employed in, in these particular kinds of conversations, it's an important piece of, or an important decision that, that this council needs to make before the expiration of this particular term. There, and, and, and I certainly believe where the representatives for council have been remiss in, in terms of bringing, involving all of council in, in those discussions. There is a legal perspective that needs to be applied, and I think time is running out to address that.
Andre?
You're right, members of council, further discussion should be in closed session, or when the CAO is in in attendance.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, on, on that note, I will move on to the next item that concerns me, and that is the COVID protocols this council is employing. Everything that I have been told with regards to the Delta variant as a COVID concern alarms most medical professionals nationally, internationally as well. And yet, I come back to these council chambers and found that there were no divi- dividers between council members, and I'm also on the understanding that there may be members of the public or council who have not taken advantage of the vaccination program to help ensure that the spread of the COVID nineteen variant doesn't happen. So I, I, I'd like to ask administration to come back with some kind of a plan that protects all members of the public and council within these chambers to ensure the minimal opportunity for the Delta variant to occur, and to find out perhaps as a prerequisite before any member of the public enters these chambers, that they have a vaccination, because it's my understanding that federally, the government is looking at a program that will provide basically a passport for people who have been immunized on the understanding that it helps prevent or reduce the risk of spread of the, of the COVID nineteen variant. So hopefully, we can all act responsibly to minimize that situation. The third item I have is, in the White Court Star, approximately three weeks ago, there was comments made by the mayor of the town White Court indicating that Woodlands County had failed to pay its bills with regards to the shared services that the town and county presently are engaged in. And it casts in my mind a very negative, I guess, reflection on the county to provide, or to see the town somehow suggesting that Woodlands County is being negligent in its relationship with the town and honoring its obligations, and I would like the, the county to respond, I guess, somehow or another publicly, so that residents fully understand that there is an arbitration process underway that is intended to address the partnership that exists in the past, or existed in the past, and what that partnership will look like in the future. Because when the town continues to present a very biased, one-sided perspective on that matter, I think it is unfair. The last item that I want to bring forward has to do with the use of firearms by neighbors on adjacent properties, and so a couple of years back, we had a situation where there were concerns regarding the use of the of the firearms facility here adjacent to town, and we had one that is somewhat similar up on the mountain. And those gun ranges, it was suggested, fall under federal jurisdiction. But the community standards bylaws, I understand, is a municipal policy, and in, in fact, it states that the, the use and enjoyment of property is subject to certain kinds of regulations, one of them being the noise level by adjacent property owners. And the particular circumstances that I was involved in, the individuals were discharging firearms after nine o'clock at night in a residential neighborhood that created a lot of concern by the adjacent property owners. So I, I'm not sure what particular options we have available to enforce the community standards bylaw as one means to bring these guys into compliance, but when one of the neighbors went over to address the issue, he was basically told, call the RCMP, cause nothing's going to happen. So I'd like to ask administration to review what options we have to regulate the use of firearms in Woodlands County within reasonable hours. And that would summarize the, the list of concerns that I have.
Any questions for councillor Governor Lock?
Ask one quick question from councillor Governance's comments to administration. The comment about ensuring that people are either vaccinated or have a passport before they can come in here, given that the passports are widely looked down upon in the public, and if they, something that obviously federally is gonna be hard to mandate. Can we legally ask people, whether they're on council, or visiting, or dignitary, to prove that they have vaccinations before entering the building?
Through the Chair to councillor Kush, we would have to get a legal opinion on that, and I'm not, I can stand corrected on this, but unless council pass a motion to have administration proceed on any of these items, if there's no motion, then administration would not proceed.
All right, we'll move on to councillor Rennie.
No, councillor McQueen's the only one left.
Didn't I, oh, I did ask councillor Rennie, sorry.
Councillor McQueen?
So it's kind of quiet out here too, I'd just like to thank our local fire department though, I had a lightning strike on my place and lit up a tree out here, it didn't show up for two, three days, and the boys come out and washed that out, SRD come out and had to have a peek at things and cleaned it up also. So they've been busy out here the last week or so, the helicopter hasn't quit flying back and forth with these dry conditions, I'm just scared to death too, if we get another storm, it's hard to say what'll happen out here. I have to, I have to back up some of the things that Dale was talking about also, with these insurance programs that are out there for the farmers right now. The drought insurance, in my mind, is a joke. I, I bought it myself, I put a couple thousand bucks into it this year for premiums, and probably one of the worst years that we've ever had for droughts, and basically, we're looking at nothing so far. So I don't know if they're gonna change that, or what they're gonna do with it. I think the biggest concern I have is, is the lack of, I don't know, lack of concern by this provincial government that we have right now regarding agricultural issues. Just before the election, when the NDP was still running the province, I sat in a group with a half a dozen or more, I guess a dozen farmers, it was a volunteer thing with AFSC, to come up with different ideas and different programs that would work a little better for the farming community, in every aspect, in hay insurance and in crops and whatever else. And they did those interviews right across Alberta, they took different groups from the southern part, the northern part, and the central area, and everything was set up that it was looking really good. And right after that, the election happened, and the UCP got in. When I talked to AFSC, what happened to the programs, they just got kind of squashed. So it's kind of a kick in the face to the farming community, and it's a disappointment. And I guess what really bothers me is Alberta took the lead to, like Dale was saying, we're looking at around two hundred bucks a head, but we gotta come up with receipts to show that we bought feed before we see the federal money. And yet, you, the American farmers were getting a hundred and ninety-five dollars US a head months ago, and so that allowed them the chance to move into Alberta, buy up a lot of the feed that was down there, and it left the rest of us with our pants down. And that's one of the reasons I'm not at that meeting today. I've been sitting by the phone, waiting for phone calls, to see if we can get a few veils here. And, and I tend to agree with Mister Governor Lock, councillor Governor Lock's comments too, regarding this COVID thing. I'm not ashamed to say, I went and got both my shots, I know Mister Klein did, I know councillor Governor Lock did, I know councillor Rennie and Mister Prestige did, too, councillor Prestige. And I think if you're trying to be leaders of the community, or whatever you do, that just ought to call and respect for each other, and for the people that you're representing. And I'm a little nervous with this Delta variant going around myself, and when you see the numbers start climbing up, I'd just soon stay away from the chambers, and I'll do it virtually until I know that things are kind of leveling out a little bit, but that's all I have there today, guys.
Okay, thanks councillor McQueen, any questions to councillor McQueen, councillor?
Yeah, just one final comment regarding AFSC, before my meeting with Mister Nixon last week, I did try and reach out to our MLA, I phoned both of his offices, left messages, I phoned him personally to have a discussion with him, and have yet to get a call. On Sunday, I was at, as part of open farm days, I was at a long screen houses and had a chance to just have a brief discussion with MLA Long, and asked him if he'd had any calls or comments from his residents, and so far, he said he's heard absolutely nothing. Frustrates me that the, the feedback from our MLAs isn't there, I don't know what the problem is, I, it just, if, if we as council, or councillors, can't have a discussion with them, it would be really frustrating as a member of the public.
Any other, councillor Governor Lock?
Following up councillor Klein's comments, with regards to the knowledge base that the provincial MLAs and members of the cabinet have with regards to circumstances that the agriculture community in particular is dealing with, it certainly disappoints me that they expect us to keep running to them to express our concerns, as opposed to them showing some leadership and coming to the community, to council meetings, and saying, we understand there's a problem out there, what can we do to help, instead of the, the closed-door secrecy that I continue to, to see, I, I too am extremely disappointed in the in the initiatives that the province has, has taken, and, and so to Dale, I understand we're going to have an Ag Service Board meeting before the expiration of this council's term, and my recollection is that we were going to invite some representatives of the province with regards to the grazing lease management program in particular, some of the changes that were made there. I'd like to ask if, if those arrangements have been confirmed, because I think that Mister Dreechen and Mister Nixon both need to hear directly from people who are affected by some of those types of programs, as well as the management that our local agrologist has, has made in that regard, because these are very important issues that, that need input from the producers, and I don't feel that we're being involved.
Councillor McQueen?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Burrows, and just in response to councillor Governor Lock's comments, I think Ron, it's pretty sad when, when they have a provincial meeting that councillor Klein sat on just last week, and the Minister of Agriculture bows out of that one before the meeting starts, and so for the chances of us even getting the chance to talk to any of those guys at our level, at the AS, Ag Service Board level, I think we're almost hoot when they can't even get them to come to anything to do with the province. So we can give it a kick at the cat, but boy, I don't like heck if we'll see anything there.
Okay. All right, I guess that, that leaves me, so, yeah, and something that councillor Governor Lock brought up with regard to that article from the, the town and the county, and my response, I was actually asked to give a response at the end of that article, I wasn't aware that the town was having that conversation. We're in an arbitration process right now between the two municipalities, and for myself, I, I'm, I want to respect that arbitration process, and I want to make sure that the arbitration process has a chance to play out where it belongs, which is in the arbitrator's purview, not in the paper, so I decline comment on any of that, and I'll decline comment again, but I will point out that the, for people that are interested in the arbitration process, it's being livestreamed. It's actually being livestreamed right now, that's one of the issues that we're having with bandwidth at, at the moment, but it's, and it's available on our YouTube. But it's uh, and it's available on our YouTube channel. So I, I watched uh, it's five and a half hours of my life. I'm not going to get back, but I did watch it. And um, and it's, it's a bit dry, but it is a process that certainly you'll uh, you'll get an idea of some of the issues between the town and the county. And uh, I'm hopeful that we can uh, move past this and uh, and work together in the future. So, that, I'll leave it at that. Uh, as far as uh, some of Counselor Govenlock's uh, concerns with regard to COVID and some of this passport and you have to have a vaccine to get in or not get in there. I, I understand where people are coming from on the idea of forced vaccinations uh, due to COVID. However, I don't, I think it's an incredibly slippery slope. And I, as an individual, I don't support it. I don't uh, I, I, I just don't think that people's medical uh, ideas is, or I, I think we need to draw the line there. I, it's a, it's a really, really, really slippery slope. So, uh, again, I may take a little heat for saying that, but I, I think it's a, you just have to be so careful because I, I don't know where this ends and if we open the door to this. I really don't. It's a, it's a scary thing. Um, that's about it for me. Um, I'd like to certainly echo uh, Counselor uh, Prestige's comments regarding arbit- uh, administrations handling the water outage in uh, Blue Ridge. It was restored fairly quickly. The boil water advisory was lifted almost right away as soon as they got positive test result. Well, negative test results back for, for the water being safe to uh, to drink. So, uh, you know, failures happen. I always kind of say that the, the uh, the measure of customer service is not when everything's going well. It's when things fall apart and how do you respond to those kind of, those kind of uh, problems. So, uh, well done. Uh, with that, I'll uh, wrap up my comments. Counselor Govenlock?
Okay, so uh, no progress gets made unless a motion gets put on the floor. And, and so, the one commitment I made to my residents with regards to the use of guns, after hours in particular on property that has neighbors on it, is that I would bring it to the next council meeting that I've done. And I'm going to put forward a motion to request administration review the uh, regulations that a municipality can impose uh, on the use of firearms uh, in Woodlands County uh, there and report back to council with regards to their findings uh, at the next council meeting.
Okay, motion's on the floor from Counselor Govenlock. I'll, I'll, are there any questions to the motion or Counselor Klein?
So is it something, they're gonna, we'd have to get a, a legal opinion that, that we have control over? Or is that federal legislation that needs to be involved or I'm, I'm just wondering where we draw the line?
It's the nature of the request is to have administration review what our options are.
Okay, just to report back is what we're looking for then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are, are you looking at an under the noise bylaw or, or?
If, under the uh, under the uh, uh, community standards bylaw, I believe there is a possibility of enforcement uh, there, but I'm not a hundred percent certain uh, there. And so I want administration to uh, review what options we have to uh, safeguard the uh, comfort uh, and the safety of adjacent property owners when firearms are being uh, used uh, outside of the gun range that is in this region.
Any other questions on the motion? Uh, hearing none, uh, Andre?
Just one comment, uh, I understand the motion, given the uh, uh, the topic of conversation, uh, on behalf of administration, I can't guarantee that we can get it back to the next council meeting, but certainly within uh, the next two.
Okay. Okay, with that, I'll call a question. All in favor? Uh, we have three.
In favor?
Counselor Rennie, so that's uh, two, three, that's four. Okay, any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, three to four, that motion is carried. Yeah, or sorry, four to three, that motion's carried. Uh, so we will see it back on the next, well, when administration has a chance to prepare it. Counselor Govenlock?
So the second motion that I'll put forward is with respect to COVID uh, uh, protocols and requested administration uh, get a legal opinion with regards to uh, protect, I, I guess, requirements to verify vaccination of uh, any uh, individual present in council chambers during council meetings.
So, motion on the floor from Counselor Govenlock. Any questions on that motion? Counselor Kush?
Are they a question, but more of a statement? I just feel like if we're going to uh, start mandating people coming in here, you don't have the accessibility to the public that this is supposed to be.
Counselor Govenlock?
We uh, we've sat in our homes for the last eighteen months on the assumption that it was unsafe to enter these council chambers to prevent the spread of the COVID virus. All of a sudden, some people have taken comfort in the fact that we've gone through wave three and now it's time to uh, return to normal. Placing at risk the health of people like Counselor McQueen who have heart conditions uh, there. Because if that individual were to contract the COVID uh, variant, uh, his health, his life would be at risk. He isn't alone in regards to protecting the health. The science out there very clearly has been targeted at uh, encouraging and if anything, uh, mandating the vaccination program to minimize the continued spread and growth of the uh, the COVID nineteen threat that it imposes on residents. It isn't just about the personal health of the person who's vaccinated. It's about the well-being of everybody they come in contact with. And in council chambers, if we're required to be here, then I certainly think we need to step up the game and ensure the protection of everybody present in these council chambers.
Counselor Kush?
Uh, given that none of us here are doctors, medical professionals, although we're scientists on this, I don't think it's something that we need to debate or argue on. I do agree that we need to protect people. And anybody, like Counselor McQueen, definitely, he's a great member of the community. He's on this council. We have other options besides being here via, the uh, being able to stream it. If we start restricting people that come in here, I just, I, I can't get behind that. I agree with uh, protecting people. I agree with doing what we can, what's best for the community, what's best for the people. But that's, that's where it is.
Counselor Klein?
Yeah, it's one of those, it's, 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 it's a real touchy one. What upsets me the most is, is the province not coming up with a plan, period. This is what the rules are through the province. Mr. Kenny has let us down numerous times over the last few months. And this is one of them. If every municipality or every, every business now is making their own rules. Every municipality is doing something, you know, when we come, come into Woodlands County, we have a big sign up there now that says, these are what you can, rules have. I, I don't know how in the hell anybody's going to enforce it. It frustrates me that the province is, is dragging, in my opinion, they're dragging their feet and passing it off on, on us again to make the rules. I, I don't think, uh, I, I can't go with that. I, I know the concerns, it just, it just frustrates me. We have to go from municipality to municipality and then again, if I go into the town and white court, the rules change there. Just, we, we can't continue like this, guys.
Uh, okay, I see Counselor McQueen has his hand up. You wish to speak to the motion, Counselor McQueen?
Um, just, just a comment there, Mayor Burrows, to uh, uh, Counselor Kush and, and I appreciate that. And uh, I, I guess my biggest concern is um, the reason I took these shots was for myself, is right. And the other thing was just out of respect for, for uh, well, my, my, my mom, for whatever, my uh, my son, my kids and whatever else. It's uh, it was just basically to protect the people around me. And I think as long as we can provide something, I don't care who comes into those council chambers, but you know, have, have the options there, that if there's masks there or there's something sanitized or whatever, at least have that available, I think. Um, I don't know. And I spoke to a doctor the other day. I didn't even know, didn't even know it at the time. It was just a kind of a fluke and we gabbing away. And the comment made was um, that anybody that's coming into the hospital right now that they're seeing, basically the ones with this are the ones that haven't been vaccinated. And the comment made was, we have one ventilator. And what happens when I get two or three people that come in? Maybe one that's got the one shot and one or two that don't believe in it. Who do I give the ventilator to? And uh, that's the decisions that those people are starting to make, or that they'll have to make. And that's the hard part. We, we don't have a hard part. We can put a mask on anytime we want. What about those people that are seeing the ones coming in and they have to decide who gets to live and who doesn't? And that's what it's going to come down to. And that's the scary part that's bothering me. So, that, that, that's all that worries me.
Okay, there's nothing further. I'll call the question. Counselor Govenlock?
I think the wording of my motion was to seek a legal opinion uh, there to provide some information as to what options uh, council can uh, look at to help safeguard everybody who are, uh, have an interest in the uh, management and uh, uh, decisions that the, the council makes. And I can certainly vouch for the fact that uh, virtual meetings uh, are a very ineffective management mechanism uh, for a municipality to continue. Uh, in-person uh, relationships uh, on these types of uh, things are extremely important. But when the safeguards are being shortcut uh, and they're not uh, maximized to protect everybody, uh, we, we have a problem. So I want a legal opinion as to what options Woodlands has to enforce uh, a vaccination expectation uh, there to safeguard the people that are part of the management of Woodlands County. And my understanding is that people who are unvaccinated tend to perpetuate the uh, the COVID nineteen variant much more so than those people who have been vaccinated. We need to show some leadership. We need to make sure we've got the information that we can make responsible decisions with.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Govenlock. I'd, I'd agree that we need to show some leadership. I don't think the man, mandate, mandates that you're talking about are the, are the leadership that we need to show. Uh, I think that part of the problem right now is this, we're living in a society that's being driven by a lot of emotion. There's a lot of fear, a lot of, uh, a lot of uncertainty and, and I'm, I'm very concerned about giving up certain freedoms of movement, freedoms of access, freedoms, personal freedoms. Uh, people's medical histories is, is no business of the government. I, I really, and at a municipal level, we're the lowest form of government. And we're looking at getting involved in one of the highest forms of, of personal freedoms. And I, I, I just, for that reason, I'll be voting against this motion. And with that, I'll, I'll leave my comments. Um, is there anyone else speaking to or for the, uh, sorry, uh, to the motion? Did you want to say something?
Yep, it, it's a legal opinion is all, all he's asking. And maybe then, maybe we'll get something back from the province. Because they, in my opinion, they've dropped the ball, downloaded it us. This isn't our mandate, it's the province. Uh, they need to step up to the plate.
Okay, I'll call the, sorry, go ahead. I, one-
Quick, quick, I'll, if, if we're following the AHS mandates and everything the government has already set out for, I don't understand why we need to waste money on a legal opinion to take a look at what's already mandated in AHS.
Counselor Govenlock?
I really wish that that were the case. But when I look straight across from me and I look at uh, Counselor Klein's seat in the proximity to where Counselor McQueen would normally sit, the protocols are six feet, the use of hand sanitizers is standard. Uh, there, I don't see six feet. I don't see the barriers that we've installed upstairs available between council members here. There is a risk associated with that close contact. It's definitely uh, needs review and uh, the, the maximum safeguards need to be in place.
Just as a clarification is to administration, is that a requirement, the six feet? Or has that been lifted?
Through the chair, I believe that is a recommendation.
It's a recommendation, but not a requirement?
Not a requirement, recommendation.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll uh, I don't see any other comments. I'll call the questions on Counselor Govenlock's motion. All in favor?
In favor?
Opposed.
Rennie, so... And opposed? Counselor Prestige, I had you as opposed?
Yep.
Okay, so that's passed four to three and uh, we'll get a legal opinion. With that, that concludes, oh, I'll have a, accept a motion to move counselors' reports for information?
Motion to accept counselor reports for information.
Thank you, Counselor Kush. Um, any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
In favor?
Counselor Prestige?
In favor?
Counselor McQueen, Counselor Rennie. Perfect, that's carried. Uh, I'm going to ask for a fifteen-minute break and then when we come back, we'll go into committee of the whole and deal with the uh, last little piece there. Discussion on that motion? All in favor?
In favor?
Counselor Prestige?
In favor?
Counselor Rennie, thank you. Uh, with that, motion to adjourn, Counselor-
Make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Counselor Kush. Any, uh, no, there's no discussion on a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Counselor McQueen, I see your hand.
In favor?
Counselor Prestige?
In favor?
Counselor Rennie, thank you. See you next time.